Okay, I think we're live.
So, welcome everyone. It's now 6:31 PM. And I'd like to call the Special Planning Commission meeting Wednesday, May 26th, 2021, to order. As we've been doing for several months now, we're continuing to have this meeting in a virtual setting to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact. It could spread the COVID-19 virus. Council chambers are closed. Planning commissioners, city attorney and staff are participating in this meeting remotely. In an effort to best facilitate dialogue and discussion, I'm going to ask that the planning commission are mindful of muting their microphones when not speaking. And I'll call on commissioners to speak on each item. There's only one today. One by one. And if you would like to speak, ask a question, make a comment, please feel free to raise your hand and call them. So I thank everyone for their patience as we proceed with the meeting today. So we'll start with roll call. So today we have Commissioners Barthkor, Dahl, and Bronn, as well as Vice Chair Padilla and myself, Chair Lisa. We also have staff. So we have Joanna Handkammer, the Planning and Community Development Director. I see Margaret Lynn and Liz Barrell, also from staff. And Andrew Jared is joining us as the City Attorney. We also have our council liaison and Mayor Diana Mumu. We have on the agenda to approve the agenda, but since there's only one item, I think I may skip that step and just go on to any disclosure of ex parte contacts or site visits associated with our study session and materials there. So I'll, I'm gonna use my Zoom screen so it changes as time goes on. But I'll start with Commissioner Barthkor today.
Nothing specific, other than I'm aware of many of the opportunity sites identified as part of the package that was shared.
Thank you. Commissioner Dahl?
I have nothing to report.
Commissioner Bronn?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Padilla?
Nothing to report.
And I also have nothing to report. I believe we have, moving on to the next item, I believe we have a public comment or is the comment on item one?
The public comment is on item one. So we can do the presentation and then we can hear the public comment.
Great. So I'll open the public hearing. So item one is a, we're having a study session tonight, and we're looking at progress on the 2021 through 2029 housing element and the general plan downtown specific plan update. So I'll hand it over to staff.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. We have, so we have a presentation and we have Placeworks is going to do part of the presentation as well as staff. And then we will have a discussion after hearing the public comment. So I will turn it over to, I believe Margaret is gonna kick it off for us.
Good evening, Commissioners. So tonight we'll provide you with an update on the general plan downtown specific plan update and the 2021-2029 housing element. So as we've already noted, staff present includes Joanna, Liz, and myself. And we also have our consultants present from Placeworks, including Jonathan and Amy. So we'll start off with a quick recap of the previous discussions on the general plan downtown specific plan and the housing element, followed by an update on the courtesy review provided by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. And then we'll follow that up with our next steps. And with that, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Jonathan.
Okay. Thank you to city staff and commissioners for inviting us to join you this evening. I'm going to start tonight with a brief trip down memory lane for those that have come along on this entire journey. And for those commissioners and members of the public that have joined the conversation along the way, I'll provide an introduction to what has transpired on the general plan downtown specific plan and housing element updates over the past 18 months. The intention is to provide an overview of the key milestones and topics covered, rather than having a substantive discussion of each slide. However, if the commissioners would like to look at any of these slides in more detail, please note the slide number and we can go back to them later during your discussion. So as you can see in this timeline, we won't start with the beginning of the general plan and downtown specific plan process. The histories of public outreach for those efforts go back much further than 2019. We're going to pick up the thread tonight with the, where the most recent community conversations began, which was November of 2019. Next slide, please. And during that month, on November 4th, the second administrative drafts of the general plan and downtown specific plan were published for public review, along with a table of all revisions made from the first administrative draft. And those materials were available and remain so on the city's website. Also during that month, the city hosted three public outreach meetings to walk through the contents of the documents and answer any questions and receive comments from the public. Next slide, please. From November, the public comment period remained open until February 2020. And over that period, the city received 543 separate comments from 55 individuals and organizations. These comments covered a range of topics, as noted here. And these comments will be addressed in the updated draft general plan and downtown specific plan, which are expected to be released in July or August of this year. Next slide, please. At the same time that the public comment period was open, a series of discussions were initiated with the planning commission. Over six meetings from January to July of 2020, the project team broke down the general plan and downtown specific plan into their constituent pieces for detailed discussions with the commissioners on consequential components. These included the topics that you see here, and I'm going to revisit these, several of these briefly. Next slide. In May of 2020, the project team reviewed with the commissioners the height standards outlined in the downtown specific plan and the relationship of those standards to common floor-to-floor heights for mixed-use buildings. The commissioners were asked to consider whether to accommodate additional height to meet objectives for energy efficiency, sustainable buildings, and accommodate retail uses, as depicted in the right column on this slide. Next, please. During that meeting, the project team also looked at the densities, which are shown as dwelling units per acre, and intensities, which are depicted as floor area ratio, or FAR. Those are prescribed, those draft standards were prescribed in the general plan and specific plan documents. And the project team looked at the relationship between those standards and height limits. Looking at comparable precedents, the project team had suggested that if height limits are retained, that the commissioners consider reducing the maximum FAR and increasing maximum densities to better align with practical capacities. Next slide. The project team presented a typical achievable density and intensity based on precedence that we looked at from Ventura and Encinitas. And they're shown on this slide, were presented to the commissioners for consideration, FAR of 1.8 and maximum achievable density of 50 dwelling units per acre. And it's important to note here, I think, that these conversations about good design, which were originally explored outside the context of the housing element, became the foundation for discussions that continued into the housing element and even the inclusionary policy discussion on how to balance the need for more housing with what is appropriate for South Pasadena. Next slide. Conversely, we also looked at what minimum heights would be required to accommodate the plan's maximum intensities or application of the state density bonus. And that's represented on the slide here. Next slide. And we summarize these findings at that same meeting in May, in a table accounting for different combinations of intensity, density, and height standards. We heard at that meeting from the commissioners that the downtown specific plan standard should be modified to be more realistic, reducing the maximum floor area ratio below 2.5 FAR and increasing the maximum housing density of units per acre above 30. Next slide. We also looked at standards for setbacks and heard support from the commissioners for increased landscape along building frontages on Mission Street. Next slide. And along Fair Oaks, we heard from the commissioners that standards should allow for variation and modulation of building frontages to avoid the sense of a continuous undifferentiated wall. Next slide. We also, at what was a very rich meeting, looked at the draft community benefits included in the specific plan and heard from the commissioners that those were not sufficient as the basis for permitting increases in building heights above base standards. For the next draft documents, which as I had mentioned, are expected to be released in July or August of this year, those standards will have to be updated for consistency with the city's recently adopted inclusionary standards. Next slide. Following in June was a deep dive on parking standards, which included a comparison of proposed changes to parking standards compared to existing codes, which you can see on this table, which was presented at that June 9th meeting. And it's important to note here that the residential standards may not be relevant for projects that take advantage of the state's density bonus program. Next slide. At that meeting, the commissioners were asked to consider a number of specific questions about the parking standards, and your responses are summarized here. Again, these discussions will inform revisions to the draft general plan and downtown specific plan that are now underway. Next slide. And continuing on were some additional answers to the questions that were posed to the commissioners at that meeting, pointing out here, for instance, there was consensus support for utilizing net square feet for calculating parking standards instead of gross square feet. Next slide. The final presentation of the draft documents, which occurred in July of 2020, focused on proposed landscape standards and sign standards. Next slide, please. And the city's Public Works Department helped us to frame questions for the commissioners' consideration based on that department's current practices. So there were some, some considerations for changes that were presented in that meeting to streetscape standards. And there was also review of sign standards, as mentioned. Next slide, please. So as you can see in this timeline, which incorporates, looks back all the way to the beginning of the, the update to the general plan and downtown specific plan process. At the same time that the second drafts of the general plan and downtown specific plan were released and presented, which was late 2020, SCAG was also finalizing its methodology for apportioning the region's share of housing units for the 2021 to 2029 housing element planning period. And for those that aren't familiar, SCAG is the acronym for the Southern California Association of Governments, and it's the Regional Planning Association for several counties in Southern California. At the time that the general plan and downtown specific plan drafts were released for public comment in November of 2019, the target residential capacity in those draft planning documents was significantly lower than the regional housing needs assessment, or RENA, that SCAG was estimating for South Pasadena. The draft general plan accommodated 589 units of new housing over the next 20 years, whereas SCAG ended up directing South Pasadena to accommodate more than 2,000 new units of housing over the next eight years. Next slide. On October 26, 2020, the city submitted a comprehensive appeal of the RENA allocation, the draft RENA allocation that SCAG had distributed and requested a more feasible and sustainable amount of housing units for the city. However, the appeal was rejected, along with the vast majority of appeals filed. And some, South Pasadena's unanticipatedly high RENA allocation has necessitated new strategies that are shaping key programs being developed for the draft housing element, which are now being incorporated into the draft general plan and downtown specific plan. And more public engagement, as you'll see in this slide, has occurred in 2021, and there will be much more to come. Next slide, please. So before I wrap up my comments, I wanted to quickly recount how the public conversations shifted from the general plan and downtown specific plan to the housing element. A work on the general plan and downtown specific plan was paused last year to allow public conversations about how to address the unprecedented RENA within the framework of the updated housing element to proceed. Beginning in summer of 2020, the planning commission's discussions began to focus on housing policies and potential densities and height changes in the general plan and downtown specific plan in order to accommodate the sixth cycle of RENA, that 2,067 units. From May through September 2020, staff and the project team conducted a series of four housing element workshops. And from July 2020 through March 2021, staff held 10 planning commission study sessions or updates on the housing element, RENA, or related housing policies such as EDU's tenant protections and inclusionary housing. Next slide. So preliminary analysis of vacant sites and development capacities proposed in the draft general plan and specific plan revealed a shortfall of nearly 1,000 units from SCAG's allocation. This was presented to the commissioners in July of last year. And the bulk of those units, that shortfall was for lower income units, which are often accommodated in multifamily product types. Next slide. So with the commissioners and the public, the project team explored a range of potential strategies for accommodating that shortfall. Alternative strategies for accommodating more affordable housing included rezoning open space, facilitating EDU production, and upzoning in low-density neighborhoods. One strategy that was explored in depth was whether additional building height beyond the voter initiative mandated 45-foot maximum would be required to accommodate the city's increased RENA mandate. Next slide. In July and August of 2020, the planning commission discussed staff's recommendation for considering a ballot initiative to raise the height and density on several selected housing opportunity sites within the city, shown on this map. Next slide, please. Staff in Placeworks provided a presentation identifying potential height increases for four areas of the city, including six specific sites. One of those was the Vaughn site on Fair Oaks. And included in that presentation was the projected number of units that could be accommodated with the proposed increase in density and height by referencing regional precedence. The project team's research included precedents that could accommodate a grocery store on the ground floor with housing above. And specifically for the Vaughn site, we looked at local precedents in Azusa, next slide, and in Monrovia. Next slide, please. The planning commission did not feel that there was adequate information to recommend proceeding with the ballot initiative at that time. So subsequently, staff shifted strategies to consider widening the scope of potential density increases, leaving the height restrictions in place, and modeling how a developer may utilize the state's density bonus process to accommodate more housing units on more sites. In conjunction with development of the inclusionary ordinance and recommendations for streamlining the state density bonus process, Placeworks developed scenarios for the Vaughn site that modeled potential density and height increases to figure out how to incentivize good design. Next slide. That analysis incorporated visual tests to study consideration of several elements, including, next, setbacks, architectural elements, height averaging, context-sensitive height limits, and code definition of height measurement. The presentation demonstrated the feasibility of proposed development parameters within the context of architectural standards, which are now codified by inclusionary, the inclusionary housing ordinance, excuse me, that was adopted on April 7th of this year by urgency ordinance and on May 5th of this year by regular ordinance. Next slide, please. Instead of the individual sites that were examined for increased heights and densities, next slide. Staff in the project team used the results of the previous analysis to propose increases to densities in the broader downtown and neighborhood centers areas above the 30 dwelling unit per acre maximum that was indicated in the draft general plan, and expand the list of potential sites for infill housing redevelopment to include a larger group of candidates that met the thresholds established by HCD. Next slide. Incorporating feedback gathered from the community and planning commission over the last year, staff in the project team compiled a preliminary list of potential strategies to meet the city's RENA obligation, including an affordable housing overlay that would be applicable to medium and high-density residential areas where appropriate. These strategies are reflected in what you see here, which is the current working draft of revisions to the general plan's land use map, and in the in-process draft documents that were shared with the state's Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, for a preliminary courtesy review. We'll explain what was submitted to HCD in more detail in a bit, but first I'm going to pass the baton to Liz Barrell on city staff, who's going to discuss the broader context for understanding the city's history of housing development at this inflection point of change.
Okay, let me just get my camera on. Right here? Okay. Great. Okay, thanks, Jonathan. So before turning over the presentation to Amy to give you an update on the housing element and the feedback from HCD on the working draft programs and site survey, we wanted to step back and take more of an overview on the context of the housing element. So the 2021 to 2029 housing element is really going to represent a transitional moment for South Pasadena's housing development. From the relatively static period of the last 40 years since 1980, towards the coming decade in which more housing will lead to more inclusive housing options through mixed-use, ADUs, other multifamily housing with onsite affordable units in compliance with the recently adopted inclusionary housing element. So next slide, please. Okay. Over the last 40 years, only 839 net new housing units have been added to South Pasadena's housing stock. About 45% of that took place in the 1980s in a spurt of multifamily building, along with a reduction in single-family homes. The next significant period of multifamily construction was at the beginning of this century, adding about 337 multifamily units. Since then, the ratio of single to multifamily housing has been nearly 50/50. Over the last decade, annual housing production has trickled in at an average of less than eight units annually, although the population at the same time grew annually by 70 new residents, according to the Census Bureau. So South Pasadena is a desirable community to live, but the housing stock has not kept up with the community's growing needs. Next slide. And this clearly shows with just a cursory look at the housing market. The lack of new housing stock has put pressure on the existing home market. And as you can see from this graph, home prices have gone up faster in South Pasadena in comparison with the SCAG region, widening that difference since 2000. This translates into less affordability for those trying to enter the housing market, where generally younger households with families. The lack of new housing has also affected the rental market, pushing rents upward. Lack of available housing ultimately challenges the viability of the community and is a barrier to diversity. Future building with inclusionary housing and mid-price housing types will be needed to address present-day results of historic exclusionary housing practices in the 20th century that continue to affect the community's diversity today. South Pasadena has been handed the challenge of planning for construction of more than 2,000 housing units, including a large portion of affordable units, to address the imbalance and create a market that offers the full range of housing types and price points needed by a diverse community. After a year of reflection during the pandemic, emerging into the new normal, South Pasadena is now challenged to develop inclusive housing that is affordable. The community's previously expressed values to maintain its low-scale character can only be done through a strategic approach that includes the housing initiatives identified much earlier in the planning process. To quickly review progress on those initiatives, since the last planning commission in March, and I think, as Jonathan has already alluded to, the city has already begun to position itself for this transition through the adoption of the inclusionary housing ordinance with its streamlined density bonus provisions to focus on architectural design and quality. This strategy will yield the highest number of affordable housing units to comply with RENA over the lifespan of the housing elements. And steps have also been made to move forward in production of ADUs, which can support the goal of adding more housing units with minimal change in the context of existing residential neighborhoods where they will be located. And in addition, rezoning commercial and other non-residential districts, as Jonathan has just discussed, to allow mixed-use development with significant housing components, along with the commercial uses that support them, will be the most significant part of the 2021 to 2029 strategy, with the potential to provide many new residential units near transit to make better use of the city's limited land resources. One more avenue to explore is what the city might want to initiate on sites that it owns, where the city might partner with affordable housing developers to build a project or two over the next eight years of 100% affordable housing. The potential to do this has increased greatly due to state and county housing measures that have opened up new funding sources. And often, the biggest challenge is finding the land. Next slide. So that, that gives you an overall picture of the strategies that you will be seeing in the housing element. But before finishing this higher-level look at a different planning paradigm for the next housing element, I wanted to share with commissioners some of what we can learn through examining the demographic data, which we are gathering for the housing needs section of the document from the Census Bureau, the State Department of Finance, and other sources. After all, this planning exercise is about the community, the people who live here and the people who will live here in the future. A closer look at these demographics indicates, for instance, that the housing characteristics of seniors in South Pasadena is really very interesting, and that solutions for housing that meet the needs of seniors might also hold a key to finding more opportunities to provide housing for others in the community. And this is what I'm referring to. Although the over 65 cohort represents only 14% of the population and comprises 22% of all households, this segment of the population disproportionately controls homeownership, with 74% owning their own homes. Today, in South Pasadena, 43% of the owner-occupied units are owned by seniors, and mostly by those over 75, who collectively own 1/3 of the owner-occupied units. As the baby boomer generation moves into the senior population, many studies have shown a preference for aging in place. In South Pasadena, the lack of other housing options means that staying in single-family homes, which may eventually become bigger than needed to meet their needs, is actually the most affordable option for seniors who purchased their homes years ago. This can have implications for availability of homes for younger members of This can have implications for availability of homes for younger members of the community. As this significant component of the existing housing stock takes a very long time to recycle to the next generation. So housing strategies and programs in the housing element. To address the diverse needs and desires of the senior population would include. Encouraging ADUs as an option to accommodate multiple generations of a family. On residential properties, building more senior housing facilities for those who need supportive services. And providing downsizing options for seniors in a mixed use development. Which may be an attractive lifestyle for those who wish to sell their properties and remain within the community. And lastly, for those who wish to remain in their homes revitalizing. The home improvement program to help qualified low income residents make necessary repairs to promote livability. Providing a diverse range of all these opportunities for seniors. Will benefit the wider community by providing more housing options for families as single family homes turn over. So I just wanted to share this as one of the data insights that we can use to help build. A comprehensive set of housing element programs as we're moving forward. To. To develop and produce the housing element. And so now I will turn the presentation over to Amy Sinchheimer of Placeworks.
Thank you, Liz. Good evening, everyone. Chair, members of the commission, Amy Sinchheimer, Placeworks. I'm gonna move on now and talk about the preliminary submittal. That the city made to Housing and Community Development Department earlier this spring and talk about. What has happened since then. So at the end of March, there was a preliminary submittal of portions of the working draft of the housing element. For a courtesy review by the state and that included three sections. One section that addresses how to meet the Rena and the analysis of the sites that are part of that approach. And also a section that includes some of the draft programs that will end up. In the comprehensive program section of the housing element and those are the programs that are. In support of that approach to meeting the Rena, so specifically supporting. The number of units that is required and then finally an appendix section that has maps and. And additional detailed information about some of the sites. That are proposed to be relied on. And. This is now available online for review. Next slide please. This slide focuses on one example from that appendix of sites. This is one of the sites that is proposed to address multiple different income categories and. Each of the exhibits has information about the size of the site, how many parcels it includes. What the proposed zoning and land use is for that site. The proposed density, if it's proposed to change, how many units could realistically be accommodated on that site and. The city did reach out to all of the property owners for the sites that are shown in this section of the housing element. And if they responded that they were interested in residential development, that's been included here as well. Next slide please. I want to touch on that program section that will be part of the public draft housing element. It will here, number four here is the section that I just mentioned that is the programs to support the Rena approach. And those will be tailored further based on the review from the state and any review that we get from you tonight. And then there are three other types of programs that will be included in the draft. That includes programs that are in your existing twenty fourteen to twenty twenty one housing element. That are being continued and some of them have small modifications. There also are going to be programs to address new state laws that have taken place since the last housing element was adopted. And then any other programs to address community housing needs that have been identified during this housing element update. Next slide please. This slide presents one of the. The tables that is in that submittal that was provided to HCD, this is a table that. Shows where the city was at in terms of analyzing how to meet the Rena. At that point at the end of March, you can see in the. Row just above the bottom row, that's where the Rena numbers are shown. Totalling the two thousand and sixty seven units. And then each of the four rows above that are different categories of. Sites or the ADUs that are included in this analysis. So we've got accessory dwelling units there in the top row. Vacant sites that are already suitably zoned. Vacant sites that will need zoning changes in order to. Address these different income categories and then non vacant sites that also would be zoning changes. And you know, this is. What was in place in that working draft at the end of March, it will be changing as we move forward towards the public draft. And this is a guide for the city, once you have your adopted housing element, you know, what the final numbers in this table. Will then be monitored and revisited as the planning period. Goes towards twenty twenty nine and that will officially be monitored. Looking at the ADUs, there's a program that's proposed to. To monitor the ADU numbers to see if they're progressing in the way that. Is projected in the housing element and also every year the city reports to the state about the progress on the housing element and. That will also be ongoing monitoring. Next slide please. The next couple slides focus in on some of the numbers that are in that table on the previous slide and the feedback that was received in the preliminary review from the state. So this is focusing on the accessory dwelling unit row. The number, total number that was in there, five hundred and fifty five units was seen as too high by the state based on the past trends and proposed programs. So the approach would be to strengthen the programs that support the ADU creation. Especially if the city wants to pursue a higher number of units than what's known as a safe harbor number and that's the number that HCD will accept without additional supporting trends and programs and that's. Discussed in more detail in the HCD sites guidebook. And then. Some new trends that are just emerging in the last couple of years and are based on some of the things that the city is putting in place. Are the fact that more ADU permits were received last year and so far this year than had happened previous to that. And so. That is one thing that shows a trend of increased ADUs being applied for and and permits approved. The updated ADU ordinance will go into effect next month. And the city is also doing additional outreach and other efforts surrounding ADUs, so. The final number that is in your adopted housing element, you know, should be closer to historic numbers than this five hundred and fifty five number. And based on those new trends. Next slide please. This focuses on the the two rows sites that do need zoning changes of most of the units shown in these two rows. Are when you look at the details in the appendix, the the mix of units is divided out into fifty percent for lower income units. Twenty five percent for moderate and twenty five percent for above moderate. And many of these sites take, you know. Strong approach to utilizing the full site in terms of the development capacity that is. Available under the zoning, so either whether it's. Redeveloping the site and including the existing use, redeveloping the site, including some of the existing buildings. Or actually full redevelopment, that there are different approaches considered for each of the sites in there, but. The draft that was submitted did have a a high percentage of. Capacity assumed and the state felt like that high percentage may not be realistic, so to take another look at that. And. The unit mix is also something that will continue to take a look at and. Part of the next steps will include. Additional analysis about the inclusionary regulations now that they've been adopted. And how that works with the state density bonus. Next slide please. This focuses on the the row with the vacant sites that already have suitable zoning. HCD wanted to make sure that the suitability of all of these sites was confirmed that they are developable and good sites for housing. So the city is going to work to further refine and and clean up these sites, this list of sites. From that working draft. One example of a site that. Is in there that is likely to be removed is the community garden site. And in general, we'll just make sure to explain the assumptions that went into. This set of sites moving forward. Next slide please. So with that feedback. And there was more feedback than that, but those are some of the highlights. And I think you also have the the written feedback that was received. In your packet of materials for tonight as well. We are taking a look at some adjustments to the strategy moving forward. In general, providing more narrative and analysis, especially on the sites, but in general, just to tell the story of. What's happening in South Pasadena and what's expected to happen during this next planning period. Some of that is what Liz just talked about. And how the, you know, recent trends and the new strategies will accommodate much more housing than in the past. As I mentioned before, to, you know, reduce the projected ADU numbers and and support the the number that is. Included in the public draft with trends from this year so far and also the strengthening of the programs that are related to ADUs. There are quite a few sites you'll see in the appendix that have multiple parcels. That make up a site. We do have quite a bit of information in there about property ownership and interest in in development. But we want to add some more there to make sure that, you know, if there are multiple parcels that make up a site that there's a a strong. Narrative about why those could potentially be consolidated and and developed as as a project. As I mentioned, we'll remove any inappropriate sites and then balance the loss of those sites with. Other sites and additional strategies to support the sites that are in there. And the affordable housing overlay is one of the tools that is proposed for some sites. Primarily outside of the downtown and mixed use areas and. We anticipate that additional sites may be added that that would receive that overlay and then we're in the working draft. Again, I mentioned a minute ago that we would take another look at the capacity calculations and the unit mix. Especially on those sites that had a hundred percent capacity assumed. And also that additional analysis of the inclusionary housing regulations. And and the research that has taken place on state density bonus and its effect on potential number of units. The units that would happen because of a state density bonus are not being included in the the numbers. And that is what is allowed under the housing element, but we definitely anticipate it being a factor in future development. In South Pasadena. And then finally, you know, we did talk with HCD and I'm going to have a slide. On this in a minute about other potential ways to address the Rena that aren't already considered in the working draft. Next slide please. And before I move on to that, I we just want to say that we're going to have a discussion after this and we'd really like your input on. That adjusted strategy and you know. Is there something that you want to add or? What what makes the most sense to you? We also. Did get some feedback both from HCD and from some public comments about one of the sites, which is the site where City Hall is now, it is city owned and. And it has been identified in the housing, working draft housing element as having some potential for redevelopment that could include. Housing, but also keep some of the existing uses. So we do have a discussion question on that and we're hoping to to get your thoughts on whether that. Site makes sense to include. So moving on to this slide. Jonathan touched on this earlier, but I wanted to mention. Some of the strategies that have been evaluated since we started working on the project and are that are no longer being pursued, so. One of those, as he mentioned, was the citywide height limit increase. Is not currently being looked at, the state density bonus does allow for more height if if that is part of a project. And sites that are not vacant where we've actually received response from the property owner that they're not interested in in redeveloping with housing. Were not included. If a site was smaller than a half an acre, but it. Doesn't have a lot of potential for consolidation based on our analysis, but it hasn't been included. We do want to note that this is one example where we're not including something. Because it isn't demonstrating strong likelihood for housing redevelopment, in particular lower income housing development. Based on housing element guidelines. But the city's inclusionary regulations do apply to any project that comes forward for. Three units or more, and if that was on a site that was a half acre or less, then there would be some affordable units. Or moderate units that could be created on those types of sites, so. Just because something isn't in the housing element and doesn't mean that there won't be other types of housing that come about, so. That's something to keep in mind and also that, yeah, when we think about the concept of no net loss, which is something that the city will be monitoring for to make sure that. There are sites available as they go through the planning period to address the Rena. They may gain some units in this kind of situation and. Maybe not have all of the sites in the inventory develop. As it said in the housing element, but hopefully that balance can be maintained. We also took a look at some sites that had, you know, some environmental constraints, access constraints and also. Sites that are designated for open space or recreation. And some of those were not included, including, for example, the ball field in the Arroyo. Most historic sites in the city were not included, there are, there are many. In particular for the sites addressing the lower income Rena. And there are not a lot, but some other vacant parcels in the city that are not currently zoned for residential uses, we did take a look at all of those. And determined that they weren't good candidates for housing. And then also the idea of increasing density across most lower debt, excuse me, lower density neighborhoods. Was considered and we did ask for a lot of public feedback during the workshops on that and. Most folks were not interested in that, so that was not pursued further. Next slide please. As I mentioned, we did talk with HCD about some other strategies, you know, it is a challenge to go from sixty three units to two thousand and sixty seven and. We wanted to know if there was anything else they were seeing. Around the state in any innovations that South Pasadena could look to. These are some of the things that we talked about. The idea of looking at city owned sites for one hundred percent affordable housing projects, Liz also mentioned this and. We're interested in the commission's thoughts on this. Also the idea of allowing high density residential on locations that have churches where they have. A certain size property that could accommodate more than the buildings that are already there. And then also taking a look at amending the community facility zone to expand permitted uses to allow multifamily development. So definitely would like your input on this during the discussion as well. And that is my last slide, I believe I'm gonna hand it back over to Liz.
Thanks, Amy. That was really a terrific summary. Of of everything that we've been hearing, what we've been learning from HCD, so. This slide was just before moving on to the last part of the our presentation. Just a summary of what. What how we will be stewarding the city into the next era through the housing element. And again, I think all of this was really covered rezoning for mixed use, a very strong part of the strategy. ADUs as Amy discussed in a modified way from what we've spoken so far to HCD. And and I want to add to this also the facilitation of applications, so application processing. And smoothing the way for projects with inclusionary housing is going to be an important part of the. Programs that come into the housing element. And what staff will be looking at over the next. And what staff will be looking at over the next period of time. And last, you know, again, this discussion of whether publicly owned sites are available for affordable housing projects. So next slide, and I think we'll go back to Margaret.
Thanks, Liz. So in terms of our next steps, we'll be releasing the program environmental impact report, the housing element and the draft general plan downtown specific plan in the summer for public review. And we're anticipating certification of the PIR and adoption of the housing element in the winter. And then followed by that shortly after would be the adoption of the general plan downtown specific plan. So for more information on all three of these planning documents, we do have separate webpages available on the city website. So this is for your reference. And that concludes our presentation. We did receive one written comment and one verbal comment. So I'll go ahead and play the verbal comment for.
Josh Aubrikson, Public Comment Study Session. So I met with HCD on, I guess, Thursday. A group of people asked Joanna multiple times. Comes to meet with her over this and she has ignored all emails. We met with HCD earlier today on Monday. HCD, what's in the staff report is vastly different than what HCD remembers of, recalls meeting. It's vastly different from the notes from HCD of the meeting. Like, take ADUs. ADUs, there is no possible way that HCD will allow anything close to what South Pasadena is claiming. Most of the sites included in this site selection will never actually be eligible to be included. You have City Hall and the police department there. I mean, you have to prove that you're going to discontinue those uses. You have pavilions, which is undergoing a renovation right now. You have the pocket parks, you have the community garden. You have lots where you have to use a helicopter to get to these lots. You have lots on the mountain side. You know, all these things are not eligible and, you know, I mean, you should really ask Placeworks, because this was asked of Joanna before and she gave the wrong answer. Ask Placeworks, what is required to be included? What does HCD require to be included in a site settlement? And what does it mean when they say you have to have substantial evidence that the current use will be discontinued? Ask Placeworks this question. Also, you have realistic development capacity calculations, which are completely illegal. You know, Placeworks seems to think you could just do 80% for everything because they did it in the past before the laws were written. That's not what the laws say today. You have to discount the fact that, hey, bonds might become another bonds instead of housing. You can't just do 80%, you know, and that's, these are some of the things that were told to South Pasadena in their meeting. They were, the inclusionary housing owners, they were not told this, but South Pasadena actually has to do a study to show that the 10% low and the 10% very low will not significantly restrict housing, which, you know, is the highest inclusionary zoning in the state. They have to include that. They'll find that out at their next meeting with HCD at the draft. That's another thing. But, you know, I mean, I encourage you guys, commissioners and mayor, ask planning to send you over the notes that HCD did and compare what planning says versus what the notes from HCD says. And you'll see that's vastly different. That's all. Best of luck.
Okay, that concludes the public comment. And staff has prepared some questions that were included in the staff report to help facilitate the discussion tonight. So we can go ahead and open that up for discussion now.
Before we move on, Margaret, could you just last, I didn't catch your name on the audio public comment. And just, could you give us who sent in the written public comment and sentence summary?
Both the written and verbal public comment was provided by Josh Aubrikson.
I thought that was the case, but I didn't hear it when the recording was playing. So before we get into discussion questions, perhaps Joanna, you could give us a you know, what you're hoping to get out of the planning commission?
Yeah, thank you. So I realize that some of you may have actually gotten the report late, so I apologize for that. I'm not sure how much of this you're able to digest in the presentation, but really our intention was to look back over the last 18 months because we've had a lot of conversations. And, you know, and they might not seem to be linked or, but, you know, but we've, we've taken the conversations that started with the general plan and the downtown specific plan. And even some of the considerations, conclusions that the planning commissioners had a year ago and helped us sort of shape how we've crafted this package of strategies, right? So we wanted to provide not just for you, but for the community, a look back, but to try and create the, you know, show the narrative of basically what we've been doing and what we've been talking about for the last year and a half and how that's relevant now. So that was, that was really the point of the staff report and the presentation to sort of reorient everyone to give it some context. The second, the second thing is, is we did, you know, in putting together these strategies, we wanted to take advantage of HCD's courtesy review. So we sent them a working draft of what we had, as we mentioned, and had a meeting with them last week, which was very productive. We got some great feedback, which is exactly what we wanted to hear as far as, you know, what of the items that we are really sort of pushing the boundary on, they were comfortable with and what they weren't. It helps us shape these strategies and into a public draft that we're compiling. So we wanted to get your feedback on, I think, maybe some of the sites that we included. If you have some thoughts about the sites. I know that, you know, we specifically brought up the City Hall site. We, you know, we wanted to revisit, give you, give you the opportunity to revisit any of the decisions or discussions about, you know, the strategies that we have, that we decided not to pursue anymore. And to give us your comments on the ones that we are continuing to pursue and the new strategies that HCD has presented. So we certainly can go back to any of the slides that you want to talk about. We just want to get your kind of temperature about what, where we've been, where we are as we, you know, staff and the consultants put together the public draft. And, you know, we know that the, that the, the working draft had a lot of, you know, sites and cleanup that needed to be done. But we really did want to take advantage of HCD's look at it because it will be very helpful as we compile this draft for the public.
Are you looking just for individual commission comment, commissioner comments and recommendations? Or do you need motion?
I don't need a motion. We really would like to, if there are pieces of the strategies that as a commission you'd like to talk about or you want to ask questions about. We just want to, you know, kind of get your, get your thoughts.
Okay. Any other commissioners have questions for staff before we get into this?
And I just want to let us know if you want to go to the questions in the staff report. And at the end of the presentation, we put some questions up. Let us know if you want to go to that or if you just want to talk on what you've heard or read.
I, I think it would be helpful to have the questions available and maybe kind of group, you know, go around question by question or clusters of questions as opposed to turn into them all. Yes, Commissioner Brown.
Can I just ask a quick question, which is, I just kind of wanted Joanna's reaction and maybe Margaret's as well to sort of the the input from the public comment that, you know, that there were perhaps the HCDs, there was much more concern than is put forth in your comments in the notes from the meeting.
Yeah, sure. Well, I think that it may be that, you know, we submitted a working draft, knowing that it wasn't a complete draft. So when we hear, we need you to justify why you've included this site because you don't, you haven't given us enough information. We think, okay, you know, that's fair. We didn't give you that information. But it's not something that we're worried about. You know, certainly we had conversations about sites that they, they questioned, why are you including four grocery store sites? That, that doesn't seem realistic to us. So we'll, we'll take a look at that again, but we, we included those sites. For example, many of them have very large surface parking lots. Those are, you know, they're well-located. There are some other reasons why they're actually very good sites. And certainly the redevelopment of one or two of them, you know, in phase, phases is not an unreasonable thing to consider, but, you know, we will do more homework and more analysis to provide. So I think that it's really, if you think that if you take the working draft as a complete draft, then, then maybe there would be more concern, but that's not how we presented it.
Okay, that's helpful. I just, I just wanted sort of you to give a sort of response to that.
Sorry, Commissioner Barth, for.
Quick question and, you know, forgive me because I was not part of the commission before. I've been catching up on all of the materials and it's kind of walking around like a happy citizen and now, you know, I'm studying. So just wanted to understand the thresholds that HCD wants to see. I mean, one is sort of obviously the capacity issue from a general plan and zoning perspective in terms of how much capacity is there on vacant or likely developable sites to show, demonstrate that you can actually accommodate the arena allocation. And then the second part being the affordability question. So what, how does HCD look at affordability? And how do you demonstrate that, you know, so much of the housing is going to be affordable versus market rate?
Yeah. So before I hand that to Amy, because she's, you know, well-versed in HCD language. I do want to make a point or reiterate a point that Amy made. So there is a set of criteria that we are required by the state to submit a spreadsheet, you know, a series of documents that shows these assumptions. And at the bottom, at the total, we have to total to the arena that they've, you know, allocated to our city, right? But there, and what you conclude on that spreadsheet has, has rules about that. And so that, you know, we're following that formula. There are also housing units that are going to be developed because of policies that we have and will be putting in place that don't, don't get on that spreadsheet because they're really hard to predict where that's going to happen. You know, HCD has not traditionally allowed looking at inclusionary housing or state density bonus. We actually had a conversation about that. And they wanted to hear more from us because we felt that, you know, while we only included base densities, for, for example, we know that everyone we've talked to of recent comes in with a state density bonus project. So it's above the base density. So we have evidence that we can provide and we have a story that we haven't yet told. So, so there's that. But then there's also the, you know, there, there are units because of the inclusionary policy that applies to three and more units. They're going to be built throughout the city that don't get on that spreadsheet, but they're going to be built. And so when we do our annual reports every year, those help add to, you know, our meeting of the arena. So I just want to put that out there. And, but other than that, I'm going to have Amy reply as far as what HCD is looking for.
Thanks. Yeah, I guess I would also sort of reiterate what Joanna just said. It's something that I don't think has been said yet tonight is making sure that we differentiate between what is required for the housing element document, which is what we're working on right now in terms of what is allowed and looked at by the state to meet the arena projecting forward before you actually start building any units. And then the rest of the time till 2029, you are reporting on, you know, what you've actually approved or built. And that is a little bit different. So like Joanna just said, you can count any housing unit that is completed. And some housing units are harder to demonstrate the potential for during the housing element document preparation. But that said, to answer your question, like you said, you know, the densities are a key factor. So for South Pasadena and most other jurisdictions in your region, HCD and the state have a 30 dwelling unit per acre threshold. And if that density or higher is allowed, then that is one of the things that is considered suitable for affordable or lower income housing. It also has to do with where a site is located. Is it near amenities and transit and access to other things like that? That's definitely been a big part of what we've looked at for South Pasadena. The size of the site is also something that is in the rules from the state. So sites that are between half an acre and 10 acres are considered more likely to develop with affordable housing projects than sites smaller or larger than that. And that my understanding is that's based on, you know, industry research and also has to do with financing of affordable projects. When we're looking at things on a site-by-site basis, the property owner interest is definitely a strong thing to have. It's not a requirement, but it is definitely looked at very favorably by the state and if you have that on a site, it may decrease the need for some of the other justifications or narrative that can go along with a site. One of the things that is looked for, and we do have some of this in the, the working draft is other projects that have already happened on similar sites. And actually, one of the comments that we got that we, I don't think has been mentioned yet in our discussion with the state was just to tie together those example projects. Some of them are in South Pasadena, some of them are in the region to actually say, this is, these are similar to these sites in our inventory. So they have, they have similar characteristics in terms of where they're located, the size of the parcel, what kind of uses were there before and were discontinued or, you know, redeveloped in order to have this project be approved and constructed. So as much as we can, we try to include that kind of information. You know, as Liz talked about, we know that there isn't a huge track record of multifamily affordable projects in South Pasadena. So we include as much as we can. And then we talk about, you know, these actions that the, the city is taking now and in the last couple of years to try to move the needle. So that's
Yeah, just, just so I kind of clearly understand it. A city is looking, I mean, you have the capacity estimates on one hand. On the other hand, when we, when we say that these are going to be likely sites or likely candidates for affordable housing, that's as far as we're going, right? To say that these are likely, which is why we assume that these are going to be, you know, likely affordable developments because they're, if they're not allowing you to count, let's say, density bonus, affordable housing units that are going to be as a result of density bonus. I don't know, I'm not, I'm not entirely clear if they're allowing you to count the inclusionary units. They're not. So in that case, we're kind of earmarking certain parcels because they're most likely candidates for 100% affordable projects. Is that correct?
Yes, or some percentage of affordable. We actually don't have, there are only a small number of sites that show 100% affordable in the current approach. And that is partly because that, the track record isn't there and partly, as we mentioned, I think earlier, because there is this requirement to maintain enough sites to address all the different income categories. And if, if we have most of the sites that have lower income units assigned to them with 100% of lower income and half of them develop with market rate, then you don't have any sites left for your lower income arena. So that, that is kind of the approach at this point in the process and it doesn't mean that you won't And it doesn't mean that you won't get 100% affordable projects on some of those sites. I think it is very possible. And it happens, you know, I live in San Luis Obispo County where we have even less affordable development than in a lot of parts of the state. And we're seeing a lot of 100% affordable projects coming forward with all of the funding and incentives that are happening right now. So that's a long answer to, you know, that it's, it's a way of kind of spreading everything across the sites in hopes that, you know, they will develop in these different ways to come together for your whole housing picture.
Commissioner Padilla.
Thank you. I wanted to ask a couple of questions because for me, they're a little bit foundational before getting to the bigger questions that I think staff wanted some input on. But first, I thought Jonathan, Liz and Amy did an incredible job presenting over 50 slides with so much information, but it was really well done and really thoughtful. So thank you very much. I'm having a little trouble connecting the dots on the affordable housing overlay. Is that the sites that are identified in what was called the exhibit lower income arena inventory in those larger maps in one of the packages that went to HCD? Because I know one of the questions you wanted to hear from commission on are how we feel about the sites. And for me, it may be a little hard to get into that level of detail tonight because of how much information is, was presented. That, that's very specific input that may be a little challenging, but, but I think maybe we have to, we really have to hear from everyone on that. But maybe you could just connect the dots for me, and I'm sorry if I'm not getting it. But what is the affordable housing overlay physically in terms of the city plan? Is there an exhibit that shows that? I also had trouble following it in the one table you showed Amy. I think it was like on slide 47. You, there were all these housing categories like ADUs, but I didn't see what was called the affordable housing overlay. So maybe you could help or Joanna connect the dots on that.
Yeah, let me, let me start and I'll, and I can have Amy, you know, jump in. So the overlay is, is the tool for rezoning essentially. So there's in the sites inventory that we sent to HCD. Actually, I had, I don't know that it had, had maybe, I don't know, a handful of sites that were outside of the downtown and the neighborhood centers, which is what we know from the draft general plan and downtown specific plan as the areas of the community, sort of the tolerance for intense intensification, right? So that's where we really started our sites there. And then there is, there's, you know, there's a church site on Monterey that's, you know, that's underutilized. So we started looking about, okay, let's include that. We started looking elsewhere that was outside of those zones. We didn't find a lot, but a handful of those. And so those, that's what we sent to HCD. But since then, we, we, since the March, you know, 25th, I think is when we sent it off, we started talking about expanding that overlay potentially if we needed to. So this was, I think we got a question at one of the meetings in the past, like what if they don't accept as many ADUs as you want to? We said, well, then we recalibrate, you know, then we find it somewhere else. And so the overlay is a, is a strategy that we've started to, staff has started to look at exploring, you know, high density and medium density residential in the city, which is not necessarily in the downtown, right? It's the, the, basically the dark sort of orange parcels here. So not everywhere, but looking in site by site and area by area, the, I think high density residential is, the max density is 24 dwelling units per acre, which doesn't count as far as HCD is concerned, as far as a low income housing site. So we're thinking, okay, what if we put an overlay and we include certain ones of those sites? And say, if you build affordable housing, you get, you know, 30 as your, you're in the overlay. So you get a base density of 30 instead of 24, right? But we're looking to say, okay, there's high density residential, but what is it next to? Is it next to actually a low density? Maybe that's not, maybe, so it's not just blanket all, all high density residential. We're also looking at excluding any historic properties because we don't want to put pressure on the historic properties to turnover, right? And so it's, it's a way of looking at, there may be properties in the city that are already developed, but they're, you know, the buildings are in such a state that it would make more sense to redevelop them with more housing if they had a little bit more density. And so that, that's, we haven't, we haven't developed the map because we're still actually going through the process of looking site by site. But we will, we're going to have that in the public draft and that will be available for people to comment on and for the commissioners as well.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Are you looking at like a discontinuous overlay?
Yes.
Okay.
I would just add, if you do want to look site by site at what was in the preliminary submittal, the sites section piece of that in table six dash four, the proposed zoning column indicates the sites that are proposed to have the overlay.
At the time that we submitted it, but there's a lot of sites that are not on there yet.
Any, any Commissioner Doll?
I just wanted to remind the commissioners that in addition to the one public comment we got today, we also received a letter in our last planning commission packet that was a general comment, but it was very specific to what we're talking about tonight. So hopefully, everybody read it. It was lengthy and remembers that. But I just want to make sure we have that in our memories as well.
Thank you. That's good. It was, it was, it contained a lot of information. So do you want to bring up the, are there any kind of clarification questions or further questions on the presentation?
I don't know if this is the right time to ask, but for the scoping meeting that was held, and I'm sorry that I could not attend that. I think I saw that there's a recording available. Will, as part of any future community workshops, will there be a summary of what was heard at the scoping meeting from any community members that attended? So that's, that's kind of, and you don't have to answer that right now. I guess it's more is, would that be valuable for us to hear what was raised? And if it's something that would be available later, I was just curious if that would be helpful. If folks attended, if there was any, just a few bullets on comments.
Yeah, well, Julian, Julian Neary is here from Somas and I can ask her to turn on her camera and her, her mic.
I mean, if the commissioners feel, yeah, if that would help just understand because it was a kind of a public forum that opened the discussion and I know I wasn't able to attend. Thank you.
Okay, there we go. Sorry. Margaret, I think we're trying to click things at the same time. Yeah, absolutely. Zoom, it is recorded. And so you have the whole presentation and at the end, there were just a couple of public, recorded public comments. And, and there was also some discussion there. So you can hear those. And yeah, there, there wasn't, we actually had hoped there would be maybe a huge, a huge group that attended and wasn't quite as high as we were hoping. But nonetheless, yeah, there were, there were some comments and we could email, easily email both list of what those comments were. I would honestly have to go back and look. I know Margaret pulled that together. So we have that. And we can absolutely summarize that in future, in future meetings very easily.
Thank you. That's very helpful. I think that was it for me. Thank you, Chair Lisa.
Do these, so are these, do these questions include the ones in the, in the staff report?
Yes, these are the questions from the staff.
Okay. Why don't we, since we're six, why don't we go two at a time? And we can go round robin and share our opinions. So again, I'm just kind of following how I see people on the screen. So Commissioner Doll, you want to weigh in on the first two?
Okay. I concur with HCD and our public comment that I think we've been too optimistic about our sites. I think a lot of, and the cleanup needs to take place. And the, you know, size of some of those sites that are not able to be consolidated and the steepness of the sites, I think, need to remove a lot of those single family sites that just don't make sense to add units. And I think it's clear that in all of the categories of of ADUs and vacant sites and non vacant sites, we've been overly optimistic. So I don't think we have much option other than to increase densities. So I guess I think that we need to increase densities in order to meet our arena. And in terms of question number two, I, I think we need to maybe talk some more with other cities or have our consultant give us more advice because it seems like we've, we're running low on options to get to our arena number, given that we've not going to have as many ADUs as we've thought and that we can't probably develop on all the sites that we thought of and we can't probably develop as much on all the sites that we've proposed. So, you know, I think we need to magically come up with some other ideas. And I don't have any good ideas at the moment. But I look forward to seeing the next version of the housing element where our assumptions, we have to change our assumptions in order to meet our arena. I don't know, that's just a lot of rambling, maybe not helpful, but those are my comments.
Commissioner Bartho.
I still probably have more questions than, than suggestions. But, you know, just for clarification, Joanna, we haven't actually done the exercise of taking some of those suggestions and seeing how much of the capacity is impacted if once we clean up these sites or some of the suggestions per se from HCD. And do you have any sense on like, is it going to cut capacity by half? Or, you know, what is the shortfall going to be? If, you know, you know, let's say we're, we were pretty optimistic to begin with and if we were to take some of those recommendations in place, or we wouldn't know until we actually do it.
Yeah, well, so we just got this feedback, just, just, you know, we just, we anticipated it a little bit sooner. We didn't. We got it last week. We wanted to hear from you before we start playing around with the spreadsheet, for example. But I need to clarify that, you know, while HCD was clear that they didn't believe that our, are some of our assumptions were feasibly as, as they were presented. We were also told, you know, that doesn't mean they're not feasible. It just means that you need to provide the supporting documents that we don't see here. So, so of course, like there are, you know, over 200 sites. When we ran a GIS model, it populated some sites that were too steep and too small. But those are, those are kind of inconsequential when we take those out. They're not going to have, they're going to be a blip if anything. The big sites are the, are the sites that are really important. And so we're going to have to take a look at those again. We're going to look at the capacity calculations, which we will. We're going to explain the inclusionary density bonus reasoning. And we're going to actually have conversations with HCD. We're not just going to put this together and try again. You know, they've opened the door to ongoing conversations with staff. So we're going to, we're going to take advantage of that and to talk with them. But, so I can't give you an estimate if we're looking at a capacity reduction of 20% or 30% or 10%. I do think that there's going to be some reworking and rebalancing, but we anticipated that would be the case. We just didn't know where. We didn't know where they were going to push the hardest. And so now we have that direction and that understanding. And, yeah, I think, I think the, the most important, I mean, we got really, really constructive feedback. And, and we're going to take that feedback and go back to them and say, okay, now do you still think this site isn't a good candidate for 100%? What about 90%? You know, we think it's 100% because everyone that comes to us basically shows us 100% or more, you know, scenarios. So, you know, we, we think we have good reasonings. We just haven't explained it well enough. So, but, but like I said, we don't know what, what capacity reduction that is. We, we do know that we need to relook at the calculations, redo it. We're hoping we can get some feedback from planning commission, you know. But regardless, we're going to be doing that work in the next couple of weeks.
Right. And to Amy's point, maybe, maybe it'll be helpful to actually, at some point for us to focus in on those sort of consequential sites and see, you know, what is the rationale? And is it realistic or not? And what other strategies could be deployed on that? And I had a related question to, maybe it's, maybe it's number two, or maybe it's some, another question. And I was looking at some of their suggested strategies that other cities were doing and they were talking about city owned sites. And I was curious, when, when they talk about city owned sites, does it actually have to be a city owned property that is actually designated a surplus property? Or what is their threshold of saying that this is a city owned site? Because anybody can mark up a city owned site and say that, well, you know, some, some point, there will be something here. But how, how do they actually measure the likelihood?
Well, I'll let Amy answer part of that, but I believe it's part of the story that we tell. You know, for example, the city hall site, you know, the, the fire station may be, you know, an expensive component of what's already investment that's already been developed. So maybe that, that component of the site is, is, remains in place. And then the city hall building, which is, you know, two story and not an especially, you know, valuable or, you know, well working building. That might be a good, you know, place to have a replacement city hall on the ground floor and housing above. There's parking lots behind it. There's opportunity to put parking below it. So, so, you know, I think that it's not just saying on a spreadsheet, yes, we're going to do city hall. But the city would need to have, make some moves, right? They may do, we may do a feasibility study on doing it on the, on this, on the site. You know, it would really depend on if there was an appetite to do that before we delve too deeply into that. But, but, you know, we think that there is at least enough of beginnings of a story to, 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 to start to tell it. You know, I also just want to remind everyone, you know, this is a really difficult task. You know, 2067 housing units over eight years, when our general plan was contemplating 589 over 20 years. So it's going to get, it's, it's going to be hard. We're going to have to sharpen our pencils. We're going to have to really work for everyone. And so that's why this, this review with HCD for us is really helpful.
So Chair Lisa, I will really come back to other questions, but I, I'm just getting my head cleared here and making sure that I'm getting clarity on the situation. Thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Braun.
Yeah, I, I want to just follow on to Joanna's comment that this is a very, this is going to be a very difficult exercise and has been. And thinking, and I, in reading the report, staff report and thinking back to sort of the general plan meetings with the public and kind of the directions that are reiterated in the staff report about what the city, you know, input from residents and what the city envisioned for the general and specific plans before we got the arena number. I think that's helpful, but then if you look at it, then, you know, you've got to decide also, what do we think that people would really want to keep and not keep? I mean, I don't think anybody, at least. You know, the city owns the ball fields at the Arroyo. I mean, does, do people want to see building in the parks? I think the answer to that's no. Do they want to see building in the golf course? I think the answer to that's no. The stables, no. So I do think, and you know, we have that, we, and as a commission, we. Directed that we did not think it was time to increase the height limit or put that on the ballot. So, you know, I think we're gonna have to really. Think about what we're gonna do. I do wonder, Joanna, on. One of the staff report bullets was about look into an affordable housing production program. And I don't know really what that means. And I know we talked about it at a prior meeting, that San Gabriel Valley Regional Program, but I'm almost wondering whether that is something. Maybe that needs to a little bit more attention, whether it goes nowhere and we say, oh, well, that's not really worth it, but I. To me, I think the hardest part is going to be. The. Kind of meeting that the lower income and the affordability. So I would, I think that's gonna be an important focus. I think. Because I think there's going to be a, a lot of interest in preserving open space and preserving some of the city properties and in. Keeping the heights low, I do think you're gonna have to look at densities, at least on selected parcels. And it was clear from the presentation that. There's going to have to be zoning changes on some of those sites to get the, the numbers out. So. I, I think that's the right direction. I guess my additional suggestion is, is sort of really focus in on this affordable housing production programs, whatever those are. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Bill.
Vice Chair Padia.
I think for the, you know, the question about the sites inventory. I mean, I think the methodologies and where staff is headed from the presentation, I, you know, I, I, I can understand. So. Generally concur. I think some of the maps, you know, where we're, we're looking at. Sites and, and we know that some of this is in process. Hopefully we'll have another chance to review when the draft is out in July or August and, and can have done more homework on our side. For that. So I, I'm not sure I can, can say too much on number one. On number two, I had sort of a. Maybe a harebrained idea to throw out, you know, so much of what HCD considers. Are, you know, you identify the potential and it may never be developed for housing. But it's this eight year window where it might be, but there's no guarantee, right? Where the city just says, we're presenting a plan and this is viable and they sign off. What's interesting is with the ADU, right? Their methodology is based on, well, it's based on precedent. But I have to imagine there's a pent up demand for the ADUs and the ADUs, they're such a big. Influence, or I guess I should say that is a huge part and challenge, right, of our assumptions. Of the programs presented, the ADU strategies were five of the 12, right, of things we've got to do. So it's like, ADU, ADU. Could there be a program if you said homeowners wanted to sign on early? I don't know. It's like a pre permit. Interest, high interest slash commitment to, to, at some point, whether you go in for permit in the next eight years. Say you're super interested in an ADU, maybe you can't do it now for some reason. Honestly, I mean, I don't know if, if. HCD realized there was a pandemic. You know how many people probably pulled back on doing anything because of what was happening? And so many jurisdictions had trouble processing things, you know, you know, just with all of the, the challenges with everybody working remote. Everyone you speak to, it's an issue in every city in, in the country with getting permits and getting things approved. So I don't know if there, if that could hold water as an idea. Because you might be surprised how many homeowners signed on and said, so I don't know what that means. It's like, is it something? You know, maybe it's related to some of the other ADU strategies, but. You know, why does that need a guaranteed development? History if there can be a signing on, it's like a pre permit commitment to say, you know, you can count my parcel as an ADU parcel and. And I don't know, maybe you've been collect some initial fees, something you could say to HCD, look, there is interest, we could do it. So. I don't know if that makes any sense. That was kind of a crazy idea I had. I think that those are all the, the comments for now. Thank you.
The, so for the first one, I, I just honestly, I have not had enough time to really go through. Kind of the broad swath of identifications or locations identified. You know, I think we, you know, in our previous review of. You know, the four or five targeted sites. The commission and I were in favor of higher densities on those sites, and I do think we're gonna have to think pretty strongly about higher densities. And I, you know, I, I saw some other targeted sites, but I think there's probably a few more that. That, you know, there may be some ability to get, get more sites or think differently. A question I had just about process. Is what it, and we talk about this later, but you know, would it be possible for? Us to convene to a meeting that was kind of a driving tour of, you know. A handful of key sites so we could actually meet on site and have a discussion about them. Without having, I know we've done site visits as a commission before. Just to kind of boots on the ground type thinking sometimes is a little bit more helpful. So I, 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 you know, I, I like the direction we were going in and the locations identified. And the density is where we're headed, but I just candidly haven't had enough time to really. Look at the information that was provided as far as maps. But for question two, I think some of these additional suggestions, I, I'm particularly interested in the church sites. Professionally, we've been seeing lots of. Church sites where they want to build high density housing on the site. Frequently churches have just. You know, the population's aged out and folks are selling off the churches. To affordable housing developers who keep the churches, community buildings, but develop sites, but also a number of these churches want to partner with. Affordable housing developers because it's really part of their mission. You know, they feel like it's part of their mission and, you know, a lot of the, there's a lot of. Underutilized land on some of these sites. So I'm really in favor of looking at those. Closer and, you know, ideally having partnership where. Churches are partnering and developing affordable housing on sites. We have a number of church sites in town that could support. Housing units. I'm also, you know, I'm curious about. The, you know, using the public sites. I think there, you know, I like the idea of, you know. Redoing city hall as part of a mixed use development. It is not the greatest building. But I also see there's just pieces, parts. With some of the land, an example I would give is the, you know, the kind of very northern part of. Oklaun Park over by the Warmer Memorial Building. You know, there's a series of parcels there. That may be a little bit underutilized. If you just, you didn't take all of the, the park or the site that took some of it. As an incentive to get more housing along Fair Oaks there. You know, I do think there's some strategies in or around that. And I do like the concept of looking at merging lots. Making that easier so larger amounts of housing can be developed. So I hope that helps. Any further, we can come back to these, but anybody have any further thoughts on one and two?
Why don't we? Following up on.
Sure.
Sorry. No, go ahead. On, on Commissioner Braun's comment of affordable housing production strategy. It's also a question and maybe it'd be a thought, if, if, if there is an affordable housing fund and there is. Existing units being preserved as affordable, does that get counted towards the affordable housing requirement of the total arena allocation?
Amy, can you address that?
Yes. So, once you are in your arena cycle, if you meet certain criteria, you can count up to 20. You can count those types of units for up to 25% of your arena. And one of the requirements is to have a program in place that has been vetted by the state to do that sort of thing. So because that's not already in place now, we can't count those types of units. We can't project that towards the arena for your housing element document. So it's another example of where it's different when you count units during the housing element versus when you're actually. But preserving or building them. Later.
But if we have, I, I think, I think the city is right now, I'm thinking of getting in Luffy in place. And, you know, if there is a program associated with the in Luffy thing that this is. Which is, could actually be intended towards preservation. But you need to have that program in place at the time that the final review from HCD happens.
Yes, and there's some other criteria. We've, we've talked it over with the city staff, but I'm happy to provide that. So that you all can review that as well. So it's a fairly narrow set of criteria for, you know, what would qualify. But it has been done.
Okay.
So let's go on to three and four. Let's see, back to Commissioner Doll.
Yes, I'm supportive of the overlay zone strategy and I think we should use it as widely as possible. And I was thinking a little bit about. That we said we would remove any historic sites, but I. I hope that, and particularly talking about the churches, as Chair Lysak said, that. Having a historic building on a site shouldn't preclude this, the potential development of the site that, you know, there could be. Compatible development on some of the church sites and all historic sites that. Doesn't involve demolition of the historic buildings, but so I wouldn't want to rule out all historic sites. And. I just, I think we need to focus our. Intensity on downtown and the kind of the industrial ostrich form type areas. And I think we need to increase. The densities on those which bumps up against our height limits. And I just want to clarify that. Speaking for myself, and I think most of the commissioners are opposition to increasing the height limit was in the. The way that it needed to take place in a very short time period and my concern that it wouldn't be approved by the voters. So I think we need to put increasing height limits back on the table and. You know, start the community conversation that's necessary to, to build support for that concept. And I think that it is possible to build community support for that. In. In lieu of developing on our. In lieu of proposing development on open spaces and community gardens and. Incredibly steep hillside zones and such, I think in that. Manner, the conversation I think could gain community support for that. Question number four, I, I need a little bit more explanation about what assumptions for commercial and office uses we were talking about. That's in the downtown specific plan and the.
Yes, I think. Margaret, do you have those numbers off the top of your head? The, so the, so it's interesting, before the pandemic, you know, we had a draft plan with quite a bit of office space and. And commercial space. And so this was a question really to. Do we want to revisit those numbers when we are looking at the draft plans, putting the, the updated draft plans out? Are those still realistic or, you know, viable?
It's on, it's on page four of the staff report. So it kind of throughout the city, it was 300,000 square feet of office and 130. Thousand square feet of retail with 100,000 retail on, in Mission Street, you know, Mission Fair Oaks downtown specific plan. And 125,000 square feet of office in the. Same zone there.
And just to clarify, you know, I believe that the retail is probably has some correlation to. The mixed use zones that are included. So, you know, some portion of the ground floor assumed. And I, and I'm not sure where the office originated.
And this is incremental commercial capacity, is that right?
Yeah, so this is, you know, the, the general plan is over the lifespan of the plan, which is a 20, 20 year lifespan.
So, yeah, I think we do need to reconsider those numbers in light of. The pandemic, but I think it's too soon to make an intelligent. You know. Assessment of the impact of the pandemic on office space. I mean, we, we know in general the trends, but I don't know that. We can make those. Recommendations today. And there was one other thing, I, I don't know if we have. Minimum densities anywhere in the city, but I know there's several. Or at least a couple that I can think of off the top of my head of sites in the downtown. Or in the Mission District that have been developed with single family homes. And so that's taking off sites off the market that, you know, could and probably should be developed with higher density. So I. Would like to maybe throw on the table the idea of. Minimum densities that you can't redevelop a site. To, to a lower density than we think is appropriate in certain areas. That's my.
That is a requirement in one of the programs that we discussed with HCD, the. The rezoning programs to place minimum of 20 units per acre.
Okay, great. That's all I have.
Sorry, could that be part of the overlay zone?
We, we could.
Just as a thought. Oh. Commissioner, sorry, I, I, people got shuffled again. So Commissioner Braun.
I, I also support the overlay zone strategy. And I also do believe, following up on Commissioner Doll, I think we do need to look at these office and retail numbers. I think that needs to be revisited. Yeah. Anyway, that's all I'm really gonna add. There's just so many pieces to this puzzle. So, yeah, I think. I think you gotta look, you're gonna have to look at everything. Maybe raising the height limits on specific properties. I think that's always discussed. When we talked about, you know, the going to the voters, you know, just kind of limiting it to certain. Areas or parcels. You just, there's a lot of pieces to this and I think you're gonna have to. Move them around and find the best answer, but I, I think those things are in play.
Thank you. Commissioner Bartholomew.
Thanks. Supportive of the overlay zone, but I had a couple of questions on how these overlay zones work. And as I understand it. Joanna, this is, it's an incentive zone related to affordable housing production in terms of density, right? So it will need to be calibrated against sort of inclusionary housing or state density bonus or all of those other incentives related to affordable housing. That already exists and, and has to be at a density level that. Either across those thresholds. either across those thresholds or, you know, will have to get to this threshold before you get to those others. But I think those others are actually by right, you know, so you will, will have, you know, so if it's like a difference, differential between twenty-four dwelling units an acre and thirty dwelling units an acre, it may not be a sufficient incentive to actually create anything. Because there are already those other incentives in place. So I think, I think an overlay zone is a, is a good idea, it just needs to be calibrated appropriately so that it can produce the desired results. In terms of the commercial and office uses, I think what would be helpful to know, and, and I'm, you know, since this is incremental, I'm pretty sure there is already sort of unutilized, there is existing capacity that is not developed as office or commercial right now. And I was wondering if we know or at least have a ballpark idea, I mean, not right now, but at some point to how much of sort of unutilized capacity there is so that we can make a judgment call of whether that additional four hundred and fifty thousand capacity is realistic or not. If we're right at the brim of like, there's no more capacity, then, then maybe we need some, maybe not as much. But if we have a lot of capacity, then maybe we can sort of seriously rethink.
Thank you. Vice Chair, do you?
I support the overlay zone strategy. And yes, I think like my fellow commissioners, the commercial and office use, I think definitely have to be revisited. From looking at the table, I'm wondering if we've already double dipped, well, partly because all of this is in process. And then it had to be put on hold while we were working through the arena numbers. But I'm wondering if sites that have been identified to, to take some of that swear footage or could, could carry that are now the sites we need for housing. So anyway, maybe that's what you were saying, Commissioner Barthakur is, it needs to be revisited, I think, without question. It just seems like, I don't know how we're putting all of this ten pounds in our five-pound bag or more, ten pounds in our one-pound bag. So that's, that's really all I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you. So as far as the overlay zone, I, I'm in favor of an overlay zone strategy. I, I'm not, I'm not in favor of kind of small spot zoning. So I, I do think, you know, there needs to be enough cluster of parcels for the overlay zoning to make sense. And I agree, kind of, there's going to be this balance of the density bonus and the inclusionary housing. So kind of understanding and being able to target kind of underutilized areas, maybe a little bit outside of the traditional areas that we think, that we think of already for kind of development. And I, I don't have a whole lot to add on four, I agree with my fellow commissioners, I, I do get the feeling that there is, you know, there's a, there's a vacancy rate in the existing, particularly existing retail. You know, that has been fairly consistent in my time in South Pasadena. So I do think there is underutilized, underutilized capacity in our existing, at least, commercial space. I don't have as good of a feel for the office space. So that's my two cents. So the last two questions, I'll go back to Commissioner Dahl.
Is it possible to put the programs up on the screen? For number five?
Yeah, we have.
I guess just an overall comment, we can have all the programs we want and all of the goals that we want, but I don't think we have enough staff capacity to, to process all of these things. And hopefully Mayor Mahmood is listening. You know, there are a lot of people that apply for ADUs, but they're being told the process is going to take them three to four plus months and if we want to develop, you know, affordable, all, all these other programs, we just, we don't have the staff, maybe even considering, consider having a housing department or a housing staff that are dedicated to, you know, producing housing and affordable housing. That's just.
That's just my.
So where the programs in, in the they're, they're in the staff report, I think, on page ten. As I could just go through it. There was rezoning of lot, I think, I, I think this is the programs that I, that you're asking about, Joanna.
Let's, let's, I think it's the strategies that you're talking about. I think it's the, we put it up as the, the last slide. Let's go to the very, very last slide of the presentation. Of the presentation. Can you go to the very last slide? One more. So we have like a back pocket slide at the very, very end. There, the adjustments for working strategy. Is this what you want to talk about, or you want to talk about actually housing programs?
What is the question you need my feedback for on number five?
I think, is it not the attachment that was called working draft selected programs for HCD review? And there are twelve programs, they're called like Program Three Point A, Three Point B. Is it possible to pull that up?
Yes, thanks. Here it is. So we have rezoned and redesignate sites to meet Rena. We have Program Three B residential demolition, so let's keep going down. Parcel assemblage. Inclusionary housing regulation, some of these, you know, where we can say, yes, we've, we've done affordable housing production. So, right, this was mentioned earlier as the potential of having a St. Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust is one option. Another option is to bang a local, you know, using the Lufi for the inclusionary housing and funding a local affordable housing program. That's not regional. Three F is allow and facilitate ADUs. And then within that, there are several. Yeah, we have monitor ADU production. Go ahead. I was just gonna read, you know, the other ones, historic property ADU amnesty program. Adjust the ADU permit utility connection and impact fees. ADU education and promotion and homeowner outreach. And I think that speaks to a little bit of what Commissioner Padilla was talking about. You know, potentially even doing a survey, you know, who's interested in doing an ADU within the next X number of years. General plan, affordable housing overlay, that's one of the programs. So, right, the programs and the strategies, there's a lot of overlap. So the program is, you know, how, how do we, how do we implement it? How do we monitor it? How do we evaluate it over the eight-year cycle?
So I, I think all of those things are great, and we need to just make sure that we have the capacity to do them. On the ADUs, I was thinking maybe a strategy to support our optimistic number, which probably is too optimistic, but is to, instead of just saying it's X number, five hundred and whatever, or whatever the new number is, people just divide that by eight and say, we're not, there's no way we can build this number of units per year. But maybe if we spell it out in, in an annual method, that in year one, we expect twenty, you know, eighty years. And in year two, we expect, you know, and just actually spell it out. And it seems a little more realistic and doable than just dividing the number by eight, which is what you naturally do when you see a number. And that has to be achieved over a year, so maybe more of a program. And also that strategy could include over time, how we're making it easier for ADUs to be developed as well. You know, that in year three, we will have added you know, more I don't know, more model sites for people. So we expect the number will jump in that year or so on, so that I think that would, would be helpful. And maybe instead of going on to the sixth question, we should get everybody's comments on this before we have to move the screen around and go back to, to that. So that's, that's all I have to add on this one.
Was there any specific feedback on any of these programs that was received from HCD?
So, one of the, we, we heard that if we want to continue to exceed the safe harbor calculation for ADUs, we need to do two things. One is we need to strengthen and have more ADU programs. I mean, even though they're five out of twelve, and that was, that was a recommendation. And we need to look at, you know, the, looking at a number closer to the historic ADUs or some kind of verifiable trend. I mean, one of the things that we're looking at right now is we had, you know, last year, we had thirty ADU applications. And I think by May fifteen, we already had eighteen applications. But I have to say that we've had even many, many more inquiries, and some of those are waiting until June fourth, when the new ADU regulations are in effect. So we may have, you know, quite a few more very shortly after June fourth. So I think that that, those kinds of, we'll just have to tell the story of what we see in the trend. We, you know, we already started to show the, an upward trend from over the, over the last five years, you know, five years ago or four years ago, three years ago, two years ago. And those of, you know, those numbers are increasing. So I think that we'll continue to, to try and get, you know, more information about that and show a trajectory that we think is feasible and realistic.
What, what percent of all housing units built in the city are ADUs?
Currently?
Yeah, or over the past five years. Probably a pretty high percent.
No, no housing, housing units total?
Yeah, yeah, well, we haven't built very many housing units.
No, I mean, so over new units, actually not that, not that many, you know. Like I said, there was maybe one unit four years ago. And then, you know, we had eighteen permits, I think, or seventeen permits last year. So, but there was also, in, I think it was two thousand seventeen, that ADU law allowed for ADUs on different, you know, a site that was a minimum site that traditionally South Pasadena didn't allow.
Yeah.
I think before a certain, maybe two thousand seventeen, you couldn't build an ADU unless you were on a lot that was twelve thousand five hundred feet. So we're not going to have historically high numbers of ADUs when they were so restricted in the past.
Right.
And that's part of the story that we need to tell.
I, I would just, hi, I would just add that last year's numbers that we reported to, to DOF, I think about half of the units were ADUs. So I think there was one multifamily, small multifamily, some single family, and I think the, was it seventeen ADUs or so?
Joanna, I, I just wanted to add that it, I think we've got, it sounds like to me like you've got two issues going on at the same time. Is, is one, the feedback from I forgot the acronym, but HCD. One of their is, is they were, they were possibly okay with some of the things that you've proposed. They just needed more documentation, right?
Yes. Yeah, they were clear the ADUs, that was two, there were too many ADUs.
Did they, did they tell you what they thought was a, an okay number, did they not?
They, they started to talk about a range, and then he pulled back from it and said, you know, you really need to, you know, I need, I mean, many times in the conversation, they said, this is not, we're not telling you what is acceptable and not acceptable. This is not a formal review. This is a courtesy review or giving you feedback, right? They were clear, though, that they felt like we overestimated the ADUs and that we would need to pull back on that number and strengthen our programs.
So I mean, there's, so, so you, but so then you have an idea of what they're really looking at as a reasonable number, because he gave you a range. And that's really what they're going to accept.
Well, I don't know, Amy has more experience with housing elements in the past. I don't, I, we were very clearly warned not to take, you know, take any feedback as a definite accepting. I mean, I think if you follow the handbook, then they're going to accept that. But most of what we're, you know, presenting is, is pushing those envelopes intentionally, you know, we, this is a difficult task for us.
I do have quite a bit of experience with ADUs in the past, but the law has changed a lot. And the way that HCD is providing feedback about them has changed, you know, a lot over the last year. So I would agree with what Joanna said, that they're, they're not going to give us any guaranteed feedback at this point. But they definitely said that it looked like we were on the path where we could support, the city could support a higher number than the safe harbor with the programs that are included. So, and strengthening, strengthening of those. So we definitely didn't hear that we could only, only go with, you know, those calculations that are in the guidebook.
What is the safe harbor number?
There are different options for that. And yeah, so it's either counting ADUs before twenty eighteen and multiplying those with their formula or taking the numbers twenty eighteen to present, and that is what the safe harbor says.
Okay, yeah, it sounds to me like we can do better than the safe harbor. That makes sense. And by the way, I don't know if you've talked to other jurisdictions, but I'm certain they're having the similar issues, right? So I don't know if there's any, not collaboration, but sharing of ideas. And of course, every city is different, but.
Yeah, and speaking for Placeworks where I work, we are working across the state on housing elements right now. And we meet every week, the housing team meets. And then we also meet once a month to talk about new things that we're experiencing, you know, troubleshooting and, and problem solving with things that are coming up with our different jurisdictions that we're working with. So yes, we, we do that regularly.
All right, I think I'm out of order.
The sorry, I can't remember what question the question six was.
Chair Lesec. Could I just add a comment to the?
Sure. Yeah, I was gonna, gonna continue on, but I just was Commissioner Dahl finished with her two?
Yes, thank you.
Why don't you go next? Vice Chair.
Okay. Oh, I thought, were we going around just doing five? Sorry.
You're doing five and six, so.
Okay. Oh, no, I don't have to go next, sorry. Oh, no, I don't have to go next. Sorry. I thought we were doing one at a time. Um, you know, the one question I had with the ADU incentive, and this goes back a number of meetings. And I actually think Chair Lisa, you may have raised this as a potential tool is as one of the ADU incentives and this challenge of how, you know, we have incredible staff here at the city, but how much you can take on, all these are programs, as Commissioner Doll noted, that take resources and time and energy as part of the ADU. Is there any structure right now for applicants, if this is a big incentive program, for applicants to pay more for expediting through, I don't know what it is, a permit review vendor, a service, or is that already happening? Sorry that I don't actually even know that. But to, you know, people are saying, oh, it takes three to four months. Well, can we do it in one to two months? If, if there's a way to contract with a service or an applicant comes in, hey, I'm willing to pay. Is, is that a possibility or is that something we already have? And sorry if that's a naive question.
So we, um, we, we have that program for applications in general. I don't know that we've asked any ADU application applicants if they want to pursue it. Because right now we essentially don't have an ADU application fee. The only, only thing we charge for an ADU application is $159, I think, for the planning inspection fee when they're done. So it's a very inexpensive and it's meant to stay that way as an incentive. But we can look at offering, you know, ideally we are organized so that we can process them quick, more quickly. And that's part of the, that was part of the intent of the ADU ordinance update that we, that we just recently, you know, had adopted. Council recently adopted. The second part of that is on historic properties, which we have a lot of interest in that. And so that's a little cumbersome until that phase two is adopted and that's anticipated to happen later this year. Actually, I think late in the summer, so pretty soon generally. We also have an ADU brochure that's coming out that walks someone through the process. You know, there are, you know, there, there is a requirement, state law requirement that we process ADUs, complete ADU applications within 60 days. So actually getting a complete application is, is, you know, is what we're also working on is putting the information out there and facilitating applicants to have a complete application. And then, and then the time clock starts for a 60 day review. So we have a lot of things that are in place right now to make that process faster. It's just not faster yet. But I do anticipate it's going to, going to be that way. I think it is going to get faster. And we're, you know, some of the, you know, the opportunity of phase two of the ADUs is also to clarify some of the process questions that we've had to kind of grapple with because there, you know, for example, there is state law and then there's also, you know, a short preservation. You know, and, and, and to understand how those two work together is a little cumbersome now. And so we're trying to streamline that. So I think we will see some, some process that'll be speeded up.
Okay, that's fantastic. Thank you, Joanna. That's it.
But, but, but I, but just to be realistic for a second, and this is a comment. You know, getting a completed application is not simple, right? You're going to have to have the site surveyed. You're going to have to have plans drawn up. You're going to have to deal with utility companies. You know, it's not just the city that makes it a complicated process. There's consultants, there's other organizations that are involved that are not like, you know, trying to get an electrical hookup. You know, plan right now is so difficult. So there's just, you know, there's, I think, I actually think the city is doing a lot of good work in getting things streamlined, but I, you know, there's still a lot of other expense and time that I'm not sure the city can control other than, you know, starting to develop some sort of grant program to help people through it or you know, a little, you know, it's just, it's a challenge.
And Chair, can I add, the 60 day review is a planning review. It's not, it's not the permit, right? So it's 60 days for planning review. And then it goes, then, then you submit to the building division with the permit drawings. And then there, you know, additional requirements for building code to beat building code. And sometimes those can be pretty onerous and unanticipated. So it is, we're, we're trying to provide enough of that information to applicants before, while they're in the planning process, so they know what to anticipate. Some of that they can actually start to work on prior to getting the planning approval. And so it's just understanding what costs might be involved in developing the ADU.
But a, but a standalone AD is going to need sprinklers. It's going to need solar hookup. It's going to need all these other requirements.
Yep.
So that people aren't quite used to yet. I'm sorry to interrupt. Any, any further items on five or six, Vice Chair?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Barzak.
Um, I, I think in terms of the programs, I mean, they're, they're, they're all sort of, you know, current and prevailing programs. I was curious and, and, and the number of them, particularly the ADU one, you know, I think we've discussed it at length. I was curious, like some of the other programs, like the site assemblage, Joanna, is that, is that creating? Is that a significant capacity builder? Or is it going to have sort of marginal impact? I was curious because is there, the, the way I read it, like right now, there is the program states that the city will facilitate. I, I was not entirely sure if there is any incentive to site assemblage, like, like in the overlay zone. Is there any benefit of greater density at a site of a certain size? That encourages sort of, you know, a smaller size to be assembled or, or is it sort of more a procedural thing in terms of the program?
So I'll let Amy get into the details of how prevalent that is. But, you know, at the moment, I don't believe that we actually weren't creating any incentives density wise for doing so. And I think facilitating was streamlining, you know, showing a preference for, indicating of, you know, that, that that's a desired strategy. Because I know that that can be not the case in certain jurisdictions. So I think that it was, you know, partly that. I don't know how many, Amy, can you, can you have a guess of, of our sites analysis at this point? How many we're looking at that are assembled for larger sites?
Um, my guess would be at least half of the sites that are in the appendix. So the sites for lower income are multiple parcels. And many of those who have the same owner, but yes, the parcel assemblage program is definitely something that HCD wants in the housing element and based on their feedback. And they did ask some questions about, you know, is there a way that the city could modify the program to show more of a, a commitment from the city to facilitating consolidation of parcels. So we're, you know, looking into what that might be in terms of what's feasible for the city. But it is a, a program that is almost always looked for by the state when there are those types of sites included in the inventory.
So, you know, largely if you're saying that they're, they're essentially facilitating single owner sites that are just fragmented. And, and providing an incentive for that through either, you know, a density bonus for assemblage is not necessarily providing any sort of way to accelerate anything, or, or is that, or have you, are you seeing that elsewhere? Are there other cities doing anything to accelerate site assemblages or encourage site assemblages other than facilitating or streamlining?
Um, you know, there's always the financial facilitation that is, you know, an option for some jurisdictions. And I don't know that that's on the table for South Pasadena.
Pay to assemble?
Um, you know, some type of financial assistance to make it more worthwhile for the, if it's multiple property owners or maybe even the, the same owner, but I'm thinking more in cases where there are multiple owners and to go through that process. And that's, might include, you know, selling the parcels. So if there's some way to, you know, motivate people to, to want to do that. And then I think it's also just any kind of streamlining of the process that if that isn't already in place, so that it's, you know, not another, you know, big step that someone has to take in order to make a project happen. And I, I think it is fairly common. And I've definitely seen other projects where there are multiple parcels that have been consolidated by a developer.
Yeah, no, it'll be, I think in conjunction with the overlay zone, it may be an interesting thing to explore if there are any incentives that we can provide. If actually 50% of those sites need to be assembled in the appendix, is there other incentives that could be at play and maybe work in conjunction with the overlay zone to encourage site assemblage? But that's, that's just a thought to, to sort of look into.
I think also we were looking at some sites that were just less than a half an acre, but when you assemble it to the one adjacent, it qualifies larger site for affordable housing, you know, for, so that's where we were also looking at this as a, an important strategy for HCD's consideration.
I, I think too, when you get into some of these hillside sites, you know, the way the parcels are aligned, you know, they run way back into the hillside where it's, you know, kind of like the single family home application we saw last meeting, you know, there's a flat part of the site and then it just takes off. So it's not, until you start to, to assemble the flat, kind of more buildable area, you're just going to end up with a single family home. Yeah. Type development there. But if you could start to assemble some of these, I know I live close to Monterey and there's a number of parcels like that there. You might be able to get some much, you know, you can get more sizable developments and deal with the hillside a little more effectively. This is a kind of, um, Commissioner Barzak, are you any further?
No, that's it for me.
Okay. Commissioner Braun, did we catch you?
You know, I don't want to take up a lot of time. I think there's been a lot of great points made. The one thing I would say just generally, it strikes me that again, we need to, we need to spend some time justifying the ADU number. But even if we could get the 500 plus, that's really only 25% of our overall number. So I just want to make sure we're focused on, there's another 1,500 or so that we're going to have to really work on. So I just want to make sure we're not over analyzing the ADUs and forgetting about the others, which I know you're not. Yeah, I think the, yeah, the consolidation, I think all the things you're doing are exactly what we need to be doing. Looking at new parcels, rezoning, get more density, maybe all the things we've talked about, maybe height limits on various parcels need to be overturned. On the, on the, um, this PEIR, I, I find it fascinating that we have to do this environmental impact report that deals with things like, you know, utilities and services and pollution, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions. Because on the one hand, the state's asking us to do this EIR. On the other hand, they're increasing all of our housing density. So it will have obviously an environmental impact. So I don't know how our consultant deals with that, but I think it's obviously a very wise move to have that done considering all three documents, the general plan, the specific plan and the housing element. So that will be interesting to, to review. Because of course, we addressed a lot of that in our appeal of the reading number. That's all I have.
I had a question about the residential demolitions. Or I, 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 I don't, it's my intuition that that's not a, hasn't traditionally been a problem in town. Is that? 3B, it's on the first page. It's really more kind of replacement.
Yeah, I mean, it's not been a, it's not been historically an issue in the same vein that we don't have, you know, a large amount of housing production.
Right.
So, but I think this is meant to remind, you know, that we have a, that we need to make sure that we keep the balance of what we're, you know, allowing to be demolished.
And I'll just add, this is specifically in reaction to newer state law. So every housing element has to have this type of program moving forward. And it was law that was passed in 2017, I believe, is part of this program.
Thank you. I am, otherwise I don't have a lot of much else to say on the kind of the programs in the arena. As far as the, you know, looking at the EIR. I do think, you know, the part, there's a parking study underway, correct?
The parking study is to be funded. And it will be part of the, yeah, of the consideration.
I, I just think that the transportation, you know, sorry to get a funny, my crib sheet here. I really think the, you know, the, some of the key things for South Pasadena, transportation and traffic has always been a big deal. Air quality has always been a, a big deal, particularly in the freeway fight, cultural resources has always been a big deal, particularly the, you know, the 710 freeway fight. So those are things that, you know, the, the longer, longer term populace in South Pasadena, you know, thinks about. So I, you know, it's just advice to recognize that there's, you know, people have been fighting some of these things for a long time. In the, in the AIA and the kind of the programs that, that's the American Institute of Architects, we're looking at kind of the 2030 initiative to reduce greenhouse gases. And as the building operations become more efficient, the percent of greenhouse gas emissions associated with new construction is becoming more and more a portion of annual greenhouse gas production. So globally, it's 11%, 11% of greenhouse gas production would be attributed to construction and only construction. And the prediction is by 2050 is systems get carbon free, that, that'll be half. So I always think, you know, when you're talking about doing large scale developments, you're talking about throwing a lot of carbon dioxide into the air. And it's immediate. It's not over time. So just a little soapbox, I guess.
Chair, Chair Lisa, our, our environmental consultant, Julian Neary, I think wants to say something about the scope of the environmental.
Sure.
Hello. Um, yeah, just real quick. So I want to be held with expectations. So you kind of know it's coming. And 2019, actually, there was a major change in the listing. It's called Appendix G of the state CEQA guidelines that provides the environmental checklist, basically all the thresholds that we're addressing. And one of the changes is that parking is no longer considered a, an impact under CEQA. It is an address. It is an address, um, as a, as a separate threshold, you know. That said, of course, we have a listing of each section, the transportation section will include um, all of the topical sections will include a listing of appropriate, um, you know, policies and actions, and a lot of those, of course, speak to parking. So that's just in terms of, in terms of expectations. Something else that's, uh, probably the biggest change was in the transportation section. If you're in an architect, you're probably aware of the shift to V M T, um, vehicle miles traveled right from L O S. And so, that is focused on, of course, is the densification. Um, in terms of impacts, as, um, Commissioner Braun noted, it's like, yes, we're looking at this huge universe of all this development happening at once based on the existing baseline. And so in that sense, it's acknowledged, it's not entirely realistic and yet it's sort of like what we have to do under state law. That said, in terms of greenhouse gas emissions and also transportation as, as is now considered an environmental impact. Simply put, the more the densification, the reduce those impacts. Um, so just, just as an expectation, um, what else? Oh, and you mentioned about construction and greenhouse gas emissions and all of that, um, per state, state guidelines, um, for G H G emissions analyses. The construction emissions are amortized over thirty years. Right? Since it's a finite amount and not a continuing emission, so it's just one of those. I mean, I take your point, I do very seriously, actually. Climate change activist, but, um, but just in terms of for the E I R, strictly speaking, so.
I, I understand, I understand there's kind of, you know, the state rules and, but there's also kind of reality and I know parking is a big deal.
It is, yeah. And some, and some agencies I've worked with then still, still include, I mean, a, a lead agency can define any thresholds that they want. Right? And they, some, some still do to address that, um, right now. As, as planned, this P E I R is not addressing that, but we certainly could. I think we have very, a lot of evidence to support. A finding of, um, you know, not significant parking impacts, but.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure I agree. I just know it's a political hot button.
I guess it would depend on, uh, how you define, define that, um, yeah, that threshold, which is really the question, so. Um, yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, anybody have any, uh, last, uh, comments or, um, discussion items? Commissioner Dahl?
Just as a practical matter, um, all of the documents that this E I R is looking at seem to be still somewhat moving targets. And, um, I would hope that the E I R doesn't rush ahead on a quicker timeline because, you know, all the costs of doing a E I R involved in the modeling of the traffic impacts or their quality impacts. And if we, we're still discussing whether our assumptions in terms of square footage are, are correct and then the locations of housing units are correct. I think we need to pull back and not wait till we've got, um, you know, pretty good idea what, what we're evaluating before we evaluate it. That's all.
I, I had a similar concern when I was looking at the schedule.
Joanna, do you, do you want me to take a stab at that or do you, I mean, it's sort of.
Yeah, yeah, let me take a quick stab at that. So, um, and Jalen can fill in as needed. So it is a, it is a very aggressive schedule. Um, and it's aggressive because of the, uh, timeline for an adopted housing element. Um, and so, uh, yeah, uh, and we, we have made some, um, internal concessions, um, in the sense of like, you know, the city might usually have a month to review a document before it goes back out. We're looking at sort of real time editing sessions over the course of a couple of days. You know, it is gonna be a really big, uh, crunch of information. Um, there are some, there's a kind of a lay of the land of the inputs that go into the environmental that aren't gonna change significantly if we do a little over here or a little over there. So and, you know, and Jillian can talk to that if you want more detail of it. But, um, we feel, um, confident that we can get to a place with the drafts, um, in July that we can have a good, um, environmental, you know, we'll circulate the public drafts and the environmental document. And, um, and depends on the comments that we get back will depend on, um, you know, how much, uh, we have to reevaluate, but we're, we're all of that has been and is being taken into consideration and it is an, an aggressive schedule.
Thank you. Commissioner Pedy, or Vice Chair Pedy.
Um, I, I'm sure staff was already thinking of this, or maybe it's already been done while we're meeting, but I think as soon as these materials from tonight can be posted. I, I know I would like to review them again because there was a lot of good consolidated information. I thought the recap on the history of where we've been the last four years was critical, even for those of us who've been here for most of that ride. To refresh on it because it has been a complicated, unique process. So the context Liz provided of where we are at this moment is really important to understand. It's kind of a, a charge for us, not just on the commission, but for the city. About these decisions that are, are not only difficult, but how quickly we have to kind of rally around and make them. So even this idea of the draft being released for the P E I R in July, having response to comments in September. Anyway, there's a way to get that out, um, via articles or, or I don't know what, how it is to, to as many people as possible. It, it's gonna, you know, it means ask, letting people know it's coming. And how we're really asking for everybody to help review comment. Not too many comments, just the right, you know, it, it's, but that can help. It's when people aren't expecting it and then, oh, I don't have enough time to comment. You know, I, we know how that feels. So if we can queue, it's like we're queuing everybody up. We gotta queue the city up and, and all of our, our residents and, and stakeholders to be prepared, um, maybe it'll, it'll help. So, um, so thanks again for all the work that staff and, and the consultant team are doing. Just a, just a little bit of a suggestion there, food for thought.
Yeah, thank you. Um, we're, you know, we're also planning to have outreach meetings about the draft during the public circulation period. So that seems to help because people can read it and ask questions or ask questions before they read it. Um, so that is part of the plan.
Great. Thank you, Joanna.
Thank you. Commissioner Barzak.
I, I, I wanna reiterate that this was very informative and, and actually the history and the context is very helpful. Especially for me and the package was really helpful as well. I'm not sure if, Joanna, if we were able to provide you the pointed uh, direction that, that you may have been expecting. And I was curious if there is sort of another point in time in not, in the not too near future where we're gonna get an opportunity to provide some more pointed feedback. And I think one of the, one of the comments that you had made, Joanna, and, you know, early was that that there's a lot of information, there, there is a goal of certain things that we need to achieve as part of this housing element and, and, and demonstrate that. Not all of these levers are the most impactful, uh, while there are a lot of levers out there to get us there. Um, and maybe sort of really understanding the impact of the most so critical levers is something that I'm still kinda grappling with a little bit, like what is actually, what are the big decisions that we'll have to make? Uh, and I think some of these will come as Placeworks does some of this initial work and in going back and scraping, really determining, is it, is it sites, is it the key sites that we need to look closely at? Is it sort of the narrative of, um, sites that we did not identify, but we think have a strong potential? Uh, we need to demonstrate that as a D U's, um, so that we can sort of provide you with, um, with sort of more, more targeted, uh, you know, comments or guidance. I think one of, it'll be really helpful to know what is actually driving, whi- which decisions are gonna drive outcomes the most? And then there is sort of the baseline, which I think is gonna happen one way or another, we can get there. Is it, you know, I think if there are difficult choices about, um, you know, think, rethinking density or height, um, we'd probably wanna do that sort of sooner rather than later.
Yes, thank you. And, you know, I, I'm, I appreciate you, um, I think you offered to meet with us again. Um, and I think as we absorb the feedback that we just got from H C D last week, your feedback today, which actually was very helpful. I think some of the big comments that you made about, yes, we need to look at density and potentially even heights, although I think heights at this point would be a program and not actually, you know, putting a ballot measure on the ballot, you know, in the very near term. Um, but, you know, that, those sort of big moves really do help us. It'll help us frame what we do over the next couple of weeks as we take a look at the, the spreadsheet, right? And we see what is really, um, the most impactful moves that we can make. And I think, you know, I certainly am willing to, and i- if you are, uh, to schedule another meeting and, and June to revisit, especially if we have some questions that come out of this kind of scenario modeling that I think we're gonna be doing over the next couple of weeks as a, you know, as a project team.
I, I, I would, um, like staff to really kind of consider doing a, um, you know, having an agenda's, um, tour of select sites. And since there's such a short kind of, um, span between this meeting and the June eighth one, you know, maybe we can look to agendas. I don't mind doing another meeting, but to me, I always like to be able to actually go, you know, study a, a given area in person based on a piece of paper, so.
I, I should take this opportunity to let you know that the June eighth meeting is going to be canceled because of just staff availability.
Okay.
But we could schedule a special meeting, um, beyond the eighth. Um, and certainly we could include a component of a, of a site, um, visitor tour.
Okay. Uh, I'll hold. My question is about to ask, um, any further, uh, questions on, um, item one, the study session? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna, um, close the item and, uh, move into the administration portion of our meeting. So, um, comments from the council liaison, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I have quite a few. Um, there were a number of good comments. Uh, first of all, I agree with Commissioner Padilla, um, regarding the quality of the presentations, not only by our consultants, but also staff. I presume they will be posted on our website because, uh, they really are very helpful. Um, with regard to the chair's recommendation regarding the tour, I also think that would be very helpful. However, um, I think the Brown Act presents some challenges. And I would, um, ask the city attorney to think about how that may be conducted other than the obvious solution, which is to have, um, multiple tours of less than a quorum of the commission. So that, um, there is no potential Brown Act violation, but I, I'm concerned that it's going to be challenging to to schedule it as a Brown, in, in compliance with the Brown Act. Um, so I look forward to receiving some input from the city attorney on that. Um, I was heartened to hear the very recent discussion. Um, it had occurred to me, as it has apparently occurred to several of you, um, that I anticipate there's going to be select significant changes to the draft housing element. And I, I think it would be an excellent idea if this commission were to meet and to review the draft housing element before it is released to our community for public comment. I think you have, uh, obviously special skills. Regarding your ability to, um, provide very important, uh, input into that. And I, I just think it would, um, definitely benefit our community if, um, the draft that they saw had been previously reviewed and modified per cent to, um, specific suggestions that you make. With regard to the comment, um, by Commissioner Dahl, um, about, uh, about staff in the planning department, this is something that I have been very concerned about, um, not only in planning, but, um, quite frankly, most of our city departments are understaffed. And just within the past two months, um, the city has approved the conversion of a part-time to full-time position in not only planning, but also the finance, um, departments. However, and I think tonight's discussion is an excellent example of this. Um, because of constantly changing laws as enacted by our legislature, simply conducting municipal government just unfortunately becomes increasingly complex. Um, and we see this not only in housing, I, I think perhaps, um, it has been expressed and, and we continue to see a number of bills introduced that are advancing through the legislature that quite frankly, give me considerable pause. I wonder how and are we going to be able to do this when we can barely keep up with everything that the legislature has asked us to do thus far, but, um, we also see such developments in the area of public safety as well as environmental issues. And it's, it's just really a challenge. And, um, we're very grateful to our community for passing Measure A. And I'm hoping that once we have a better opportunity to assess the impact of that measure on our, um, general fund, that we are in a position to, um, to augment our staff, because I am very concerned, quite frankly, with staff burnout. We've got excellent staff and they're working really, really hard. And, um, it is, as a city council member, very frustrating to see them, um, struggle to try to meet all of the demands, not only imposed by the legislature, but quite frankly, our community, um, also asks a lot of questions, um, even just responding to Public Record Act requests. They initially go through the city clerk's department, but then every affected department, you know, depending upon the subject matter of the, of the P R A. Staff has to stop doing what they're doing and then go through and look at the, uh, their emails and the documents. And it, it's just time consuming. But I'm hoping, um, once we get a better sense of, um, w- w- once we are in a better position to determine, um, budget stability, uh, I hope that we do have an opportunity to add more staff because I do think we are understaffed. And to that end, just as a reminder, the Finance Commission will be considering the city's draft, next, uh, draft fiscal year budget tomorrow evening, starting at, I believe it is six thirty. With regard to A D Us, one of the things that, um, I'm hoping that we can do, and I know staff, um, is doing a number of things, but I do think we would benefit from more aggressive publicity of our house, of our A D U amnesty program. Just coincidentally, I live on a corner lot. And, um, I live on one side of me, one adjacent neighbor went through and permitted an A D U. Um, and another neighbor, I believe, has an unpermitted A D U. Um, so just coincidentally, I, I think I've got two A D Us on my adjacent neighbors. I definitely do perceive there has been a very definite uptick in, um, A D Us added. Um, and finally, just one question for staff. Um, I'm curious if H C D acknowledged um, in any way, the considerable difficulty that our city is facing with this huge three thousand plus percent increase in, um, the number of, uh, units assigned pursuant to um, the Rena analysis, particularly given that we're a three and a half mile, square mile city. Where we don't have, um, very much of any open space and what we do have is, is earnestly charged. And we're, we're fully built out. Was there any acknowledgement whatsoever?
Uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go as far as to say acknowledgement. I, although I should say we are one of the first, we're early in, in the jurisdictions. I don't think that they've seen a great number of the ones, I think maybe there'll be some appreciation, more appreciation after they see other courtesy reviews at, at how much everyone is going to be struggling at this. I, I know Amy is, Amy's been in these conversations many times, this is my first conversation with HCD on a housing element. Maybe you can give a sense of what we heard, if there was some appreciation, if you thought there was some appreciation of the difficulty of our task.
I would say I think they appreciated the efforts that we had made so far to try to address the numbers, and they understood that it was a big task. But I would agree with Joanna, that, you know, this is their, it's their mission to implement the law surrounding this, so. Yeah, there's not a lot of conversations then, talking about, you know, not doing it.
Right, and, and I know, and you referenced several times that the law has changed since the last time we prepared a housing element. And it, it is just very frustrating to see housing bills continue to move through the legislature that would further impair our ability to exercise local control and to control our own, and destiny. Particularly in light of, I think, the permanent changes in society that we will see in a post-COVID environment, but that completes my remarks, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Comments from commissioners, I'll start with Commissioner Doll.
I would just say I'm available and supportive of a additional, or a, another meeting in June. Whenever. That's all.
Commissioner Braun.
No comments, just thanks to Joanna and her staff, and all the consultants for all the great work you're doing, thanks.
Commissioner Barthol.
Well, yeah, I want to echo the thanks, great work, and I think it, these study sessions are, you know, really informative, and I think the materials will really help the public as well. And I, I also want to echo the initial offer of willing to meet one additional time to, to delve into the details and roll up proceeds. Thank you.
Vice Chair Padilla.
I don't have any comments, but I echo my fellow commissioners, thank you.
I, yeah, I, I want to just reiterate, the, the presentation was excellent in how you did condense a lot of information into a relatively short amount of slides, I mean, fifty-two seems like a lot, but I think you could have had two hundred to cover all the complexities of what's going on. But, and I also wanted to just say, you know, how much I appreciate you going and having the kind of informal or informational meeting with HCD. I, I think the more that, you know, we can communicate with them, the, at the beginning, the easier it will be at the end, and the better plan will have. So I think that was a really good strategy, and it's, it's much appreciated, I think. It's kind of just like going in and doing a planning approval process, the more you go in, at the beginning, and collect information and understand what's going on, the easier it is to, to get your plan approved. So I think, I think it was, it was a good strategy, and thank you for doing that. And then I had, I had one little comment about senior, the senior housing slide was really appreciated. And just to, you know, throughout there, the support of housing for disabled people is also something that is important to a lot of residents in town, and just something to, to think about as we develop these programs. Otherwise, that includes my comments, so I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners, and Mayor. We really appreciate your comments, like I said, and, and we will, you'll, you'll get an email soon with a poll to see when you might be available to have part two of this conversation. And, and I'm, I'm glad that you have the package of the staff report and the attachments to dig into a little bit deeper. And we will look for that, for that additional time to meet with you. I also want to let you know that I'm getting texts from other staff to, to let you know that the presentation is already posted, so it is posted online. Anyone who's watching right now can go and, and take a look at the slides. And then as well, this presentation, the live presentation, the comments is on YouTube and can be watched as well. So those are both great opportunities to continue to, to get engaged. But, yeah, that's it.
Mr. Chair. Yes. So the question was raised as to how to have a meeting, what might be a walking tour or field trip visits, those types of things. There are two ways to do it, and both were addressed. There was a question raised as to the Brown Act. There is a way to conduct this as a group altogether, consistent with the Brown Act. It requires posting where you're going to go, actually showing up, and essentially reconvening a meeting at a specific spot at a specific time. And I don't know if this body has done that, or various members have done that. It's a little bit cumbersome, but it can be done, and various groups do it. I would recommend against going, traveling together from site to site as in, in a quorum, because that travel time together, say, three in a car or van, creates its own sort of mini-meeting that could occur. So if you're going to go to a site, go in pairs or individually, show up and, and convene, reconvene the meeting. It means you essentially start the meeting, say, at City Hall, and then arrive someplace and have that meeting there. Alternatively, as you do with most planning commission meetings, there are site visits that individuals can take, and then you just report on it, and then talk about your findings. So those are two ways to achieve it. Thank you, we, we've done one or two as a planning commission, and when I was on the Cultural Heritage Commission, they were more common. Return to a, a meeting at a specific site. Thank you. I, I do have a question, if we're not going to meet on June eighth, what, what should we adjourn next meeting to?
Why don't you adjourn to the July meeting, and then we will appropriately post a special meeting. So we know we're going to have the July meeting, but in the meantime, when we find a date, we will properly notice the special meeting.
It's the date of July.
See.
The thirteenth.
It would be the thirteenth.
Okay. So it is nine thirty, and I will adjourn the special planning commission meeting to our regularly scheduled meeting on July thirteenth. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.